Welcome everyone to this evening's Tuesday, February twenty-sixth, Daly City Recreation Commission Meeting. And for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda and under public appearance, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the City Council Chambers and submit to staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. Might add that currently, we don't have a quorum on our dais, but once we swear in our new member to our dais, we will have a quorum. So I'd like to stand for the pledge of the flag.
Well, I would recommend calling the meeting to order and doing the pledge after the oath of office.
Okay, alright. We have the meeting called to order, please.
No, you can't call the meeting to order. You don't have a quorum, you can't call the meeting to order.
With that in mind, turn around.
Okay, thanks. And microphone's not on? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Joseph Curran. I'm the Director of the Department of Library and Recreation Services. Procedurally, we're doing a little hopscotching. To have a quorum, we need to administer the oath of office to our newest appointed Recreation Commissioner Nate Ortiz. And we have the honor of having with us tonight the Honorable Council Member Dr. Rod Dos Machboal to administer the oath.
Alright. Okay. We don't have a copy of the oath, so is it okay if I read from there? Oh, it's on there? Ah, okay, great. There you go. Alright Nate, you ready? Okay. Um, so, do we have to put our hands up? Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's do it. Alright, right hand up. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Nate Ortiz.
Um, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Con- oh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
Thou bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties in which I'm about to enter.
Alright, congratulations. Go ahead. Louis, someone forget to tag me.
Oh, yeah.
Ooh, it's official, actually.
Alright. Welcome aboard, you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. May we all stand and pledge to the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Indeed. Commissioner Luna is not here. Commissioner Flamenco is not here. Commissioner Landos?
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Present.
Chair Pastor?
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion approved.
Okay, those in favor of the approval do say aye.
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 Alright, may I have a motion to approve the past January minutes?
Motion approved.
Okay, those in favor do say aye.
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 Alright. Again, welcome aboard, Nathan. And just chatting with you briefly and listening to you before you came up, before you were sworn in, it sounds like there's been a long connection in the community. So that's what we're looking for in representing the Recreation Department, is that long relationship that you've grown into. And it sounds like I don't know you, but I look forward to working with you and growing in this community with you. So, welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright. And item number three is the reorganization of the commission. And Joseph, have you had some thoughts on that?
Ultimately, it's up to the commission, but you may want to defer it until we have five people onboard.
If I may ask, maybe the other commissioners may come present in the little daytime due to traffic or something. Maybe we can wait and then we can have a second talk.
We could take the items out of order and wait and see if people show up.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Alright. Well, so as is discussed, because we're waiting for a couple more commissioners to come onboard, we're going to just take this segment of the agenda out of sequence a little bit. So, moving on to Director's Report.
Good evening, Chair Pastor and members of the commission. With us this evening is Ms. Denise Brown. And Denise is going to give us an overview of the busy season we have coming up for spring and summer camps. And take it away, Denise.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Yes.
So, I've given each one of you your own copy of the spring break camps and programs that we have coming up, but I wanted to go over them. We just recently had the President's Week version of camp that happened last weekend, February eighth to twelfth. And it was maxed out at thirty kids going on. So, it was a great event. Upcoming for spring break, we have a whole lot of choices for everyone to choose from. We have an adventure camp during spring break. All of these camps go from Monday to Friday, April eighth to the twelfth, at different locations and also at different times. And they serve slightly different age groups. But the adventure camp for SYRP Spring Break is for five-and-a-half to fourteen-year-olds. The program runs from eight AM to six PM. The cost for the residents of Daly City is a hundred and fifty-three dollars. Non-residents pay two hundred dollars. It is at the Westlake Park Pacelli Gym. And the highlights for that week are join the fun adventure time on Monday, Tuesday is the movies, Wednesday is a baking project and Wheels Day, Thursday is Ceremony Center and the farmer's market, and Friday is the egg hunt and spring feast. If you don't like land, we have a water activity at the Aqua Camp. It is at Gemona Pool. And if you've not been to Gemona, it's an amazing pool that we share with Westmore High School. And it's from eight AM to five PM. The cost is a hundred and ninety-three dollars for residents, two hundred and forty-two dollars for non-residents. And it serves six-to-twelve-year-olds. And the participants have an opportunity to enjoy water activities, work on swimming skills, and receive stroke guidance. And they play outdoor games and indoor games, attend field trips, and enjoy an end-of-the-week party. For the older age group in the pool, we have what's called our Guard Start Program. And that, again, is also from eight AM to five PM. Same price, one ninety-three for residents and two forty-two for non. It's for twelve-to-fifteen-year-olds. And this camp provides our participants with some of the knowledge and skills needed to prepare for a lifeguard course and future jobs in aquatics. It also provides hands-on experience and opportunities to make new friends, learn new games, attend field trips, and strengthen leadership skills and personal growth. The next camp we have going on is the American Red Cross Lifeguard Course. This prepares the fifteen-plus-year-olds proper skills to recognize water emergencies, administer CPR, and apply first aid. Participants will become American Red Cross certified in lifeguarding, first aid, and CPR, AED, upon successful completion of the course. Again, eight AM to five PM, and a hundred and ninety-three for residents, two forty-two for non-residents. And this one gives us an opportunity to get new lifeguards aboard in our aquatics program, which we're really in need of right now. So, if anybody out there is fifteen-plus and wants to become a lifeguard, this is a great course for you to take.
Fifteen and plus?
Fifteen plus, yeah. Spring basketball camp is provided at the War Memorial Community Center. It's from eight AM to four PM. It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars for residents, two hundred and nineteen dollars for non-residents. It serves the six-to-fourteen-year-olds. Boys and girls will learn basketball fundamentals from Coach Bud and his staff. The camp will include special shooting sessions, fundamental drills, league play, highlight films, and more. Then we have the Spring Soccer Clinic, Monday through Friday from April eighth to the twelfth, at the Geller Park Turf Field, from nine to noon. It's a four-hour program. A hundred and thirty-five dollars for residents, one forty-five for non-residents. It serves five-to-twelve-year-olds. And the participants will work on improving basic skills of dribbling, passing, shooting, trapping, and heading, as well as be introduced to new soccer techniques. The Spring Basketball Camp and the Spring Soccer Clinic are both contracted programs. All the rest of the camps that I spoke of are administered through our part-time and staff. And the only summer one that I'm going to bring up right now is the Volunteen Leadership Program, because I wanted to give you an idea of what we provide for those teens that are in our community. So, like I showed you on the Guard Start and the American Red Cross, those camps are for those young people that we want to try and get into, become our new staff, new employees. The Volunteen Leadership Program is the same thing on the land side. So, the Volunteen Leadership Program gives teens who have completed eighth grade an opportunity to perform community service at one of our four summer youth recreation program sites. The volunteers will engage participants enrolled in our summer youth recreation program by leading activities and games, supervising arts and crafts, and helping prepare for the Summer Talent Show, Summer Carnival, and other special events and activities. The Volunteen Leadership Program, participants will receive weekly training and materials, a T-shirt, lanyard, and opportunities for other bonus rewards and field trips. And this program is currently anywhere between fifty and a hundred dollars for the summer. So, they serve in a ten-week program and get a lot of training. They get a lot of opportunities to work with kids, hands-on. They get to work side-by-side with their part-time recreation staff, so that they can get an idea of if they really want to work with kids, you know, this is that kind of medium zone for them. So, our, one of our responsibilities in recreation is to try and train these young people to become the next leaders in our area.
For the programs.
Correct. So, they may not be the next full-time employee per se, but they'll definitely get a lot of part-time experience in the start.
Denise, so for the Volunteen Program or the Volunteer Leadership Program, is, you mentioned the fifty to a hundred, is that the fee for it, or is that a stipend that the teens receive?
It's a fee. So, they pay a fee, but they get ten weeks of training, opportunities, and hands-on experience.
Got it.
And they also get.
T-shirt.
And a cool T-shirt and a lanyard. And they have a journal that they keep throughout the time as well. And then they'll learn, like our part-time have to turn in time sheets, they have to turn in different documents, so that they can educate themselves. And then they also get trips at the end. So, it's kind of rewards for doing what they do. And they are truly our next leaders of tomorrow. So, anybody else have any questions about?
Just a curiosity. What's the numbers between each of these camps about?
The numbers that are enrolled?
Yeah. Let's say from the previous year, two thousand and eighteen.
So.
Just a number.
I don't have an off-the-wall number, but I would say anywhere between, for the adventure camp, it goes anywhere between thirty and fifty.
Okay.
Participants. Aqua Camp, Guard Start, they're smaller programs, so no more than thirty. It depends, like, because they're in the pool, there's going to be more staff to participate.
Right.
Spring basketball camp, probably between sixty and eighty. And soccer, spring soccer camp, probably about thirty.
Okay.
And the VLPs, we've had a hundred to a hundred and twenty.
They're usually packed. Like, they're usually to capacity, the programs.
Yeah.
In the summer.
And I kind of was wondering if we can also invite parents to actually encourage their kids to these programs in any way? Is there a word spread out to that direction?
Is there a?
A word spread out to the parents that actually help participate these kids to these programs?
In the camps?
Yeah.
So, coming this Saturday, in fact, we have our Fun Health and Safety Fair at Ceremony Center, where we have tables for our community partners as well as ourselves. We publicize all of our summer programs that are happening and our spring camps that are coming up. We have outreach through social media. So, we're on Facebook, we're on Instagram, we're on, I don't know, do we tweet? I don't tweet, but staff might do that. And then we also have a connection with the VLP program, with Westmore High School's Future Business Leaders of America. We partner with them. One of our staff also works at Westmore High School, so it's a great partnership. And they're doing a lot of things to kind of get the teens more out there during the school year, where we can get them going in the summer for VLPs.
Great. The reason why I was asking for that, too, is because I've also known that I think the Westmore High School area, we used to have a contract before that is no longer with us, that we used to use one of their fields, I believe.
So, no, Westmore Park was one of the parks that we kind of shared use. It belongs to the Jefferson Union High School District. And we did have a summer youth recreation program on that location, but that park was closed down. And so, now, instead of five during the summer, we have four locations.
Is there a request for trying to seek out another location to keep the programs going for five?
Currently, not right now.
No.
We're just trying to use the parks that we have in play. So, we have one at Marchbank, at Hillside, at Geller, and at Westlake.
Hillside, okay, Hillside, yeah.
So, we're trying to kind of serve the different pockets of the neighborhood.
Right.
And then we also have a collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club over at the Bay Shore, the Duluth Boys and Girls Club. So, we partner with them in the summertime, so that there's another program provided over there.
Okay. I'll dig more information on that this year.
Okay.
Denise, a little question here. Back in the day, we used to reach out to the elementary school kids with flyers and going home in their backpacks to go home with at the end of their school day, for like, maybe the six-year-olds and older in that group. And in the middle school, well, those are probably postings on their bulletin board, but in the backpacks of the youngsters, are we still doing that in terms of putting flyers out to the elementary schools?
We're trying to do more social media, so less papers.
Okay.
In the backpacks. The difficult part about doing that was, it wasn't maybe getting to the backpack sometimes.
Okay.
And so, we found that when we're just getting it out there in social media, it's more of an opportunity for people to see what's going on and then tabling at different events. So, not only do we have our Fun Health and Safety Fair, but we have two other events coming up that we'll be at, spreading the word about our spring and summer.
The upcoming month or following every each month?
We're going to be doing Saturday, Fun Health and Safety Fair. I have another event that I'll be tabling at the end of March, the Literacy Day for the Daly City Partnership and School.
Yeah. Fantastic. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you for an extensive list of activities.
You're welcome.
Oh, it is.
I just want to share to the general public, this aquatic camp and lifeguard area, you know, we're still a few months away from summer, but this is the time to get your kids acquainted with water, if you plan on being around water during the summer or even in the spring season. So, it's good to get your youngsters at a young age comfortable with water, so they're not too afraid when they are at their family event or at their public event, that they're exposed to water. So, get their comfort level up by signing up for these camps. So, again, sign up. Thank you.
I have one more question. So, in terms of the lifeguard programs, right, with the need of lifeguards for the city, is, do the people training, the teens training, do they get transition into a lifeguard position? Or is that built in into the program? Or is it just the tools that they receive and then they kind of follow the process?
It's the tools they receive, and upon successful completion of the course, they get certified in that. So, that certification gives them, yeah.
Got it, got it.
That next level.
Okay, for sure.
Yeah.
It's a competitive process, but I will underscore, we are at a crisis, not just in Daly City, the Bay Area. There is a shortage of qualified lifeguards and instructors. And so, anybody who happens to be listening.
Just because I know a lot of teens in need of a.
It would be a huge leg up for them.
For sure. And they get the training as well.
To have a chance at a really great, fun job, if they can complete these courses, because we have a dire shortage across the Bay region.
Good point.
Hopefully, we'll add capacity with that camp.
What do you think it could be the issue? Why we have short staff or?
You know, it's something we've talked to my colleagues across the county about. I don't know that there's a single answer to it. The millennials are definite, I don't want to disparage millennials, because they are great, wonderful, energetic people, but there are different priorities in their lives. And what we're finding, a lot of our former employees worked, one, because they really wanted to, but they also had responsibilities and bills to pay, whether it was, you know, putting gas in their car or paying for activities and stuff. We're finding a generation where mom and dad are holding the hands of these kids well into their teens, and they're not as independent as, in the recent past even. So, I don't know if that's it completely. You know, there's a lot of things we're competing with.
Maybe lack of access to swimming pools, maybe?
We've always had.
Like, public swimming pools?
Limited number of swimming pools. And the pool we have access to is Gemona Pool. That hasn't changed. That's been constant over a very long period of time. I think there's just a shift in priorities and willingness to take on the job. Hopefully, we'll get more kids excited and energized. The ones we have are great and enthusiastic and wonderful, but it's something that is affecting the cities in the north part of the county for sure, and I think spilling into San Francisco. And we've gone through this with referees in the past years. And I know at the same times, we've had shortages of qualified referees. You know, CYO up in San Francisco, where they run a very big basketball, they were having the same kinds of issues. That games were getting canceled because they didn't have referees assigned. Now, we're having this experience where we've got referees, but we've had to cancel swimming classes because we didn't have enough qualified instructors on staff. We are working desperately to bring those numbers up and, you know, hopefully have enough for, especially for the summertime.
So, fifteen and up to qualify to actually enroll for a lifeguard position? And is there anything that we can probably do? Like, I liked the thought you said that we could help these kids get stronger in these activities to become supportive to the community, something that we could probably work on, so that these kids seeing, oh, next year I could be doing this, this looks like it's going to be much bigger and better, something, you know what I mean? See if we could focus on that a little more concentrated. If there's anything that we can do to help, I'm willing to get into the Aqua Camp this year, I'm hoping. Yep.
Or maybe scholarships in the public school for swimming, something like that, that it can leaving them the desire to do swimming, you know, or.
To add it on as part of the.
Yeah, I don't know.
Say you need to be fifteen, you're thirteen or fourteen, you're working yourself to actually get a scholarship or a certificate or diploma to actually ready for yourself to take the lifeguard position. Just an idea, because this might encourage kids to actually wanting to get that position, you know what I mean?
Hmm.
It's because you always want to have that goal, oh, I want to get to that, you know what I mean? Do you know what I'm saying, yes or no? Alright. Because if it's just spreading out the word, just saying we need lifeguards, and the kids reach to the age of fifteen, they know that we need lifeguards, but there's nothing that really excited them to actually getting there.
And I will tell you something else interesting. Historically, the lifeguard positions were college-age kids. That demographic has disappeared. If you go to the pool, we have kids. They're very young instructors and lifeguards now. We seem to not be able to attract and retain college-age kids. We do a little bit better over the summer break. And that may be an issue, that they're really engrossed in their studies and picking up a part-time job isn't what they need to do right now. But it's been an interesting shift. Our lifeguards have gotten younger and younger over the last two years.
Hmm. I have seen young teenage kids being as a lifeguard, training young childrens to swim. And I myself swim at the Gemona Pool myself. So, I think it can be something that could be thought about and worked on.
I think we could definitely spread the word, for sure, definitely target a lot of, well, we could easily target what, the high schools, as well as like, having some more flyers or more exposure in terms of the programs. Also, contact with a lot of the teen programs that we have in Daly City. I know, I'm sure there's an emailing list or a contact list for all the volunteers that we've had in the past. But one thing I know, we're working with teens a lot, is that the opportunity to have a job. Because working in Bay Shore, a lot of the needs was, you know, how can I work at the center? How can I work at the Bay Shore Community Center? And sure enough, like, now we have a lot of our graduating teens from Jefferson, they're working as parking wreck staff. So, I could see the same thing happening with the lifeguard program. That's why I was asking, you know, how's the transition looking like? Because I think the end result is what would encourage the teens more.
Well, and another pipeline we have, you'll learn about at your next meeting, is our partnership with the Daly City Dolphins Aquatics Club. Gemona Pool is their home. We met with them this week, and, you know, we basically informed them, hey, anything you can do, because they've got the best swimmers in the city, are part of the Daly City Dolphins, is to encourage them to not just be part of the Dolphins, but to, you know, pursue job opportunities with us, too. So, hopefully, that, you know, they'll get the word out. That's the best qualified pool of applicants for lifeguard, or the teens in the Daly City Dolphins. And you'll learn all about the Daly City Dolphins at our March meeting. They're going to be.
For sure.
Here to share with you.
Great, great. Thank you all for your input on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Well, we're at that point where Commissioners' Reports and the activities in our community that we might have wanted to bring awareness of to this portion of the meeting that we wanted to share. Oh, duty chair, which recently had a chance to experience that new rock-and-roll flea market that just happened about a couple weeks ago. And that was pretty neat to see some nostalgic things there and see all the activity at the Pacelli Gym, just full. Kind of caught it at the tail end, but it was. I kinda caught it at the tail end, but it was still going very good with a couple of live bands, uh, playing. And, um, so it, it kinda like brought, brought the folks, the attendees back to what it once was like looking at vinyl records. Instead of, like, searching through the vinyl records or checking out the, the posters from the day. So, um, hope it continues on and, um, and it seems like the vendors had a good time there as well. So, um, thank you all, the staff that helped coordinate that, and, um, look forward to the next one.
Well, I, I attended the Black History Month, um, it was quite exciting to see, uh, many people. I also participated in a dance as well that they had up in front. Um, I also attended the key, um, let's see, that same event you were mentioning.
Yeah.
That was pretty interesting. I think I was there almost two hours. Oh, the food was great, the food was great. It was a pretty big, pretty decent price. And, uh, a lot of people showed up, they kept coming in and out, a lot of people showed up and, uh, the music was great, you could hear it everywhere. It was live, it was a wonderful day to actually explore that.
Well, I attend with you the Chinese, uh, celebration, the Doja's new.
That was, uh.
Floor.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah.
Lincoln, I'm sorry, confusing name. Um, yeah, it was really fun to see the Chinese, oh no, Asian? I will refer as Asian or Chinese New Year and all the Asian community celebrating, dancing, had fun together.
So, uh, basically at the Lincoln Community, um, Center, we had the Chinese New Year lunar and they were dancing, having food, fast and all. Uh, our supervisor, David Canepa, our Just, uh, Justlyn Moniallo, our, um, council member, and also Pam and Rod were present and when they were all able to cut the ribbons in a great celebration. The floor looks fantastic, also the wall colors are amazing, just the warm feeling. You could, that place looks pretty very good actually to be rented for parties and celebrations. I'd highly recommend that place. It's, it's changed.
It's great to, to see the, the vibrancy that's, uh, brought in with all the, the color and the festive activities that is going on. But, um, again, thank you for the sharing.
I wanted to ask if there is, 'cause something has been in my mind, um, for the summer. Do we have any activity or for the Earth Day to clean the ocean or something like that in the city? Like a day where we can go and clean or something?
Saturday of every September for the last twenty-five years, Daly City has partnered with Coastal Cleanup Day in California.
Oh, great.
I think.
Great, great.
There's usually, it's sometimes two hundred and fifty, three hundred people show up. The meeting place is at Olympic Way and John Daly by the horse stables. And the group descends down to the beach and there, there are years they bring.
Oh, great.
All kinds of unusual objects. Um, so that, that one is on the calendar. There's usually one other one that pops up over the summer.
I think, um, uh, Project Greenspace, they, uh, they, I think they host like one or two events throughout the year. And I know that, um, they've been planting trees all over the community of Daly City. I'm not sure if the, the program's still going on.
Yes, it is.
I think, yeah, I saw it in the.
On a whole new batch of trees last week.
No, for sure. And I know, like, we did the same thing at, uh, the Bay Shore Community Park as well, so, um, but I know they partnered up with, uh, the youth at Bay Shore Community Center to do, uh, several Earth Day type of events as well. So, um, I don't know exactly what date, but I know the coastal cleanup.
There's a California Coastal Cleanup.
Yeah, that's the one.
Which is the fourth Saturday. And, and that, it's all across the state and in the Bay too. And then there's also in October, the fourth Saturday of October is Make a Difference Day. And sometimes, uh, the community projects there vary, there has been a coastal cleanup element, there's been a tree planting element this last October. Neighborhood, um, sprucing up and they've done a lot of stuff at the top of the hill, at Westlake Park, Gellert Park. So there's a couple standing events every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. For, one last thing I'd like to mention is that, uh, this was out of a little sudden, um, and I really did like this, uh, pickleball free day. Pickleball was this, uh, Sat- Sunday, this past Sunday. I think the count, when I counted, was sixty, somebody told me.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two? It was just amazing to see how many people actually came in just to play pickleball. And I can imagine if there were courts out there, um, how much they would come. I've been to the one in Concord, in fourteen courts, it's full, it's full at times. And just, um, how the community gets together and talks and celebrates and the activity, the age, all ages. I've seen kids, mostly seniors, up to seventy, seventy-five, they're still active and playing. Um, we have two commissioners here and, uh, is there any possible way that we, I would like to have Terry Chu present the pickleball back again, because it's been two years. Let's see what he, and in March agenda?
I, I think that's the intent. Um, we, we lost a lot of pickleball players at Moore Memorial. And the reason, after we went through the expense of painting the lines and everything, a lot of the players complained about the lighting. Well, over the Christmas break, the lighting there and here and all over the city, a lot, a lot of, uh, lights were swapped out. It's much brighter there. So part of the reason they were doing the free event Sunday was to gauge the interest level and see if the lighting was gonna be sufficient. I haven't heard any feedback about that and I don't know, you were there.
I was there, I was there.
Did anyone talk about the lighting?
To me, it looked brighter.
Yeah, I, I will tell you.
It looks just right, just right.
I will also tell you that the reason it died there were a lot of the players thought it wasn't a safe place to play pickleball because the lighting wasn't adequate. So they, they left us, we didn't, we didn't cancel the program on that. So if the numbers, um, come back up, we'll definitely, uh, talk about expanding the hours.
So, yeah, though, I was just asking if they, we can have them in a March, uh, March agenda, if they can present.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm having.
We'd like for them to present at the next meeting.
Oh, um, yeah, we can come back.
Okay, yeah, it's just been two years, I'd like to see how they were doing. I didn't have much time to catch up, but.
No, I know, uh, Terry Chu, the ambassador for the Golden Gick Pickleball Association, will, I mean, he's, he's presented here before, I'm sure. He would love to come back.
Yeah, yeah. Great, so we'll have that.
Thank you, thank you. Well, moving on to, um, upcoming announcements, um, Dee, Joseph, uh, wanna review that with our, our audience here on the upcoming announcements?
Would you like me?
We can do a tag team. Denise has already mentioned a couple of times this evening that we will be at the Ceremony Shopping Center this coming Saturday for the Fun Health and Safety Fair we do a couple of times a year. That will be, I believe, between ten AM and two PM. It's free and it's a good opportunity, not just to see us, but a lot of our community partners and I know usually police and fire is out there too. And it's a big community gathering and it's a good, good chance to see a preview of what's coming up in the summer and in the spring.
Before, and we're, we're gonna be in the center court area and down the Macy's wing. So be looking for a center court.
Okay.
Can't miss it. Um, and then speaking of spring, we got our, uh, Teen Springs Showcase coming up on Friday, April twelfth. That's gonna be in the Pacelli Gym and that one is also free at six o'clock and it's great. It, it's amazing how many talented teens we have in this community. And we do these events a few times a year and, uh, never ceases to amaze me to see the talent we have here. So you can come out to that one, it's free. Um, I skipped over to, before that, March, as you may or may not know, is Women's History Month and we'll be proclaiming the month of March, Women's History Month here. And in collaboration with the, our brothers and sisters at the library, we're gonna have a Women's History Event at the Westlake Library on Saturday, March sixteenth, from two to four. And our guests are the poet laureate of San Mateo County, a woman by the name of Aileen Casanetto, and also the poet laureate of San Francisco, Kim Shuck. So together they're gonna come and, uh, do a poetry reading and discussion and it should be a wonderful time.
Great, great.
Go ahead Denise, take, you can take the rest of it, unless you want me to keep going.
You don't wanna talk about that one?
Um, well, we have an amazing bunch of volunteers at the Doja Senior Center and we like to reward them a couple of times each year. And the annual volunteer recognition awards and luncheon is coming up on Thursday, March twenty-eighth. So we'll remind you again at our next meeting. And what we're really looking for here is, uh, volunteers because this is the day they get to be waited on. So the ones that you s- see running around the center, working as volunteers, this is their chance to sit down and, and be waited on. So we always look for volunteers to help serve the meals to them and make their day enjoyable. So if you're interested, let one of us know. Um, a couple more quick announcements. We have, uh, Spring Fun Day, which you might think of as our Easter egg hunt that we've done for many years out on the field at Polisita School. We are moving it over to Westlake Park this year. So it's a big expanse of grass we can do the egg hunt on in the unlikely event that we have inclement weather, which we sometimes do. Uh, we also have access to Pacelli Gym if we have to move the event indoors. So that is going to be on Saturday, April thirteenth, and that is in partnership with the Daly City Host Lions. Um, give a shout out to them because without the Daly City Host Lions, this event would've died about ten years ago. So we thank them and look forward to that event. It's also free. And then, uh, the last announcement for the evening, it's another really amazing thing at, uh, Pacelli Gym is we have an Active Adult Senior Resource Fitness Fair. The setup is similar to what you saw at the Rock and Roll Flea Market, except it's all seniors. Um, and the, the tables, they're not selling vinyl records and vintage clothing. It's different services, um, a lot of nonprofit groups that, that are there to serve the senior community. That again is on Thursday, May twenty-third in the gym from nine-thirty in the morning until noon. And the last couple of years, we've had people lining up way before the doors open, that's how popular the event is with seniors. Unless I missed something, Denise?
I do wanna say that at the volunteer, um, recognition luncheon, it's not just, um, praising the Doja Senior Center volunteers, but the Lincoln Community Center volunteers as well. So in March, we celebrate all of them and then in December, it's just the Doja Senior Center. So if you have some time during that day to come and volunteer and serve our seniors, they would love it.
And it looks like at our next meeting, we'll, we'll have two items and that will be Daly City Dolphins Agreement covering the next five years because the current agreement we have with them expires on June thirtieth of this year. So we've already worked out, um, proposal that we're gonna run by you guys. And then it sounds like we'll be inviting Terry Chu to talk about pickleball.
I didn't know, this was all a surprise, tell him you go.
Oh, pardon? Oh, and youth basketball. Oh, we're gonna have a full agenda. Bring your sleeping bags to the next meeting.
Oh, okay. Nice, waiting for it.
Well, um, as we mentioned at the top of this evening's meeting, we, we kinda like switched things around a little bit, waiting for our quorum to be established and waiting for our, um, our, our other commissioner to join us, and which he has. Welcome Nadia. And, um, we have the reorganization of the commission, um, on the agenda this evening. And the election of, um, two positions, the election of the chair and the election of the vice chair. And, um, uh, there's a thought there, discussion of, uh, waiting until we have the full, um, commissioners up here, the five, um, to, uh, before we make the, um, recommendations or the elections of. But, um, I'm open to any discussions on, on that, um, so.
Yeah, I think the action would be either to go forward with the, with the, um, reorganization or if someone to make a motion to continue it to the next meeting. It's, there's, there's an action required either way, either, either to continue it or to select a new chair and vice chair this evening.
Okay. Well, um, I'd like to see, um, a recommendation to kinda wait till we're all full here so that we can have a full participation in this process. So do I hear a motion to, um, to do that, to push it off till the next meeting?
You have a second motion for that.
Okay, those in favor do say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Okay, we will, um, arrange to have it taken care of in terms of the, uh, the reorganization at our next commissioners meeting.
Yes, you'll have a very full agenda.
There you go.
In March, yes.
Okay. And, um, at this point, uh, we're at that point where we covered quite a bit this evening. Again, welcome Nathan.
Thank you.
Uh, welcome, uh, to the commission and, uh, uh, thank you for your input because of, of, uh, the Bay Shore. And it's great to hear your perspective on what's happening over there too. So, uh, again, looking forward to working with you going forward.
Of course.
And, uh, hearing how the develop, how the community out there is growing as well. So, uh, again, thank you very much.
No, thank you guys.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have a motion to conclude this evening's meeting?
My second.
And the motion to end this meeting is, has been put forward. Uh, do I hear a, um, a, uh, motion to approve it? Does it say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this meeting is now ended, thank you all.